All right, I'd like to call this meeting of the Lakota Board of Education to order today, October 7th. Do I have a motion for approval of the agenda?
So moved. Call roll.
Oh, I forgot to call the roll, sorry. Adam, will you please call the roll?
Mr. D?
Here.
Ms. Casper?
Here.
Ms. French?
Here.
Mr. Orton?
Here.
Ms. Schaefer?
Here. Now, do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Moved.
Second? Any discussion? Hearing none. Adam, please call the roll.
Mr. D?
Yes.
Ms. French?
Yes.
Ms. Casper?
Yes.
Mr. Orton?
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome everyone here tonight. We're all looking forward to the report card results and hearing from our staff that's over here in the corner, so thank you also for everyone else who joined us. I'm sure our community engagement team will speak more to it, but we did have our first community engagement meeting on the cell phone policy, and that's going to lead to some interesting discussions going forward. A reminder that stuff the bus goes through October 11th if everyone can bring in their goods to help us finish strong and support our partner of Reach Out Lakota in that effort. And then lastly, just to speak about the safety traffic panel that Dr. Whitley has been working on, so that will be October 23rd, and she has invited several different people who will be instrumental in making sure that everyone can get their questions answered. You'll have more information coming out about that and how people can submit questions and ask questions going forward. So, and then finally, don't forget fall breaks, October 17th and 18th. Don't have your children show up at school and have no one there to greet them, or I guess just our administrators there to greet them. So with that, I'll move on to Dr. Whitley's comments.
Well, we are on the 37th day of SWEAR, so it's just moving right along. Today's enrollment was 17,444 students. On the very same day last year, we had 17,610 students, so it's a difference of 166 students. For perspective, that's about seven students per building. Now, it doesn't always add, you know, it's not always that beautiful math, but just for reference. You know, as Julie mentioned, next week, we don't have school on Thursday and Friday for students. We do have a PD day next Thursday, the 17th, for all staff. And first quarter ends next Wednesday on the 16th, which is just unbelievable. So that means second quarter will start on the 21st, on that Monday, and report cards go home for the first time via hack on 10:25. So parents, please be on the lookout for those so that you can kind of just check on students' progress. And just a reminder, you know, if you need to schedule a conference, whether that's for academic concerns, support questions, or just to talk about your child's experience, please, please do so because those are kind of going as we speak. There's some coming up as well. So again, just finishing out a quarter so that we can start the second quarter strong. I know we had talked just briefly about the Community Traffic Safety Panel. Just to kind of reiterate some details of that, that will be on October 23rd from 6:30 to 8:00 at Lakota West Freshman Building. The thought exchange for folks to submit questions in advance will open tomorrow. That is our goal, and to have that open through October 15th. And the thought process of that conversation will be twofold. So we will have a spokesperson or spokespeople maybe from each organization to represent that panel. And ideally, community members would submit questions in advance for two reasons. To one, make sure that we're efficient so that we can get through as many questions as possible. Also, we'll group questions in like pockets, so again, to help with efficiency. But then also, sometimes questions need a little bit of research, right? Like what might something cost, or what are some implications of things? So we want to make sure we're as prepared as possible. However, we also understand that sometimes when you're listening to a conversation, it jogs questions. So in the room, in the moment as well, you will be able to submit questions probably via a note card to like moderators in the room, who again, can be sorting those and filtering those to see if we have any redundancy with questions that might come up, or to say like, hey, that's a great follow-up question and get that to the right person in the group. So two opportunities, kind of advanced questions to make sure the panel is as prepared and done our homework as much as possible for any things that we can do our homework on, but then in the moment, follow-up questions as well. But again, we really want to be efficient to get through as many questions as possible, but also to have the depth that we need in the answers to help the community understand what options are available. I actually had a meeting today, Mr. Passarge and I did, with the local police departments to just kind of debrief on that specific incident that recently happened at Lakota West Main. And I will say that they were very solution-based, right? They came to the table with some solutions. I think I had like seven or eight possibilities that we talked through. Some were certainly better than others, but again, it was a very proactive approach and a very meaningful conversation that then we can overlay into that community panel that we're going to have. Master Facilities. Last time we were together, you know, we talked about kind of revitalizing and re-energizing the Master Facilities Plan and kind of two pieces of that. Last time, Mr. Passarge gave us an enrollment update from OFCC, and you know, I know we had some questions about those numbers, and just to make sure that they had thorough data about the new major subdivisions that are coming, or maybe like the Milligan Interchange, which we'll hear about later in October at our second board meeting. But we're also doing a private enrollment study that is still pending, so it's still in process. Hopefully, going to have that by the end of the month, but I wanted to give you that, I wanted to make sure to just keep that on the forefront of your mind, that that is still coming and that will complement the OFCC study we have, and we can compare and contrast that data. The other piece, I met with our legal firm to just get a better understanding of the scope of work around when we need to time levy training, if that were to come up as a possibility, also to just do some reviews of our current contracts with architectures. We went through the RFB process last spring, so I asked to see that current contract. And then I'm also asking Legal to seek some clarity around some OFCC guidelines that I just want to make sure that we all have clarity on when we come together for that first working committee. And as we talked about, it will be a working committee of executive team members. Kelly and Julie will certainly represent the Board of Education as the consistent members of that, but any board member is able, if you're able, please attend those meetings so that we can just keep that communication flowing. But between Adam, myself, Kelly, and Julie, we will also be making sure to push that information back if you're not available to me. So as we get those final questions about OFCC clarified from Legal, and after I've reviewed some of the current contracts that we have in place, then we'll pull that team together to start that work. The last thing, and we've talked, I know a lot about even in August, about keeping a steady cadence of our board retreats so that we can continue to build and hone our working relationship, not only with each other, but also with the executive team and kind of the governance that we have over the district. And in my weekly update, I had proposed two dates based on some feedback. It was suggested that instead of trying to add to the November board meeting, that we pick a new date, a fresh date for that, so we don't have to add on. So the two dates we were under consideration were November 14th and November 21st. Those are both Thursdays. And looking at a timeframe of 4:00 to 8:00 PM, so a little bit more condensed version than what we had in August because that was really the brunch, so this is almost like a recalibration, a refresh, a double dip, if you want to say. So I didn't know if one of those two dates was better with anyone's schedule, 14th or the 21st from 4:00 to 8:00.
4:00 PM to 8:00 PM.
Yep. Either the 14th or the 21st from 4:00 to 8:00, so whatever works best for most, or we need to go back to the drawing board.
I really think we're looking, I'd really like to find something for all of us, like so if there is a schedule conflict, I think we can look at new dates because I think it's important for us all to be there. But once we get a date solidified, then I can get into the weeds of the details about location and agenda setting and things of that, but just looking at those two dates to see if they worked for the team.
So we discussed it in agenda, so the four of us were all available those two dates, so do they work for the rest of the team?
I think the 14th, we have finance committee meeting, did you consider that?
But that's earlier in the day, so.
That's going to like take the entire day for some of us.
Okay.
Anyway, I don't know. I'll look through, I have to check with my work schedule to see what that is.
14th works better for me. The 21st, there's a conflict.
14th works better?
14th also works better for me, but I can make the 21st work.
Isaac, check work schedule and then we'll circle back.
I'm going to check, yeah.
Okay. So I'm going to pick, so just so I'm clear, the 21st, I think there are some conflicts. Is that right? So the 21st is out. I will circle back with Isaac to see if the 14th works from him, and then if not, we'll kind of go back to the schedule and look at some different dates, okay? But right now, and I'll send a save the date and put it on your calendars for November 14th from 4:00 to 8:00, and I will confirm with Isaac that that works with his schedule. Okay? Thank you.
Anything else, Dr. Whitley?
No, I think that's all.
All right. Mr. Zink?
Okay, with the forecast coming up next month, we plan to do a overview of that at the next, on the 28th, at the next board meeting. Going to let everybody know that if you have any projects, any types of things you would like for me to simulate, or anything, shoot me an email, let me know about that, and I'll have that built in when we review that for the 28th so everybody can see options. So other than that, I don't have anything at this time.
All right. And with that, we'll move to the instructional framework student spotlight.
So tonight's spotlight is on Lakota's curriculum and instruction, specifically our district's instructional framework. Director of Professional Development, Krista Heidenreich, will give an overview of the framework, while teacher leaders Kim Carlson and Tiffany Rexhausen will share how the instructional framework is being implemented in the classrooms at Woodland Elementary and Liberty Junior Schools. Please welcome Krista, Kim, and Tiffany.
All right. Hello. Thank you so much for allowing us to share our work with you tonight. I'm glad I brought notes because my old eyes can't see all the way across there, so pardon my view over here. So what I'm going to do is just kind of lay the groundwork for what you're about to see. Last year, we began implementing the Lakota Instructional Framework, which is rooted in the work of Dr. Robert Marzano. It's research-based instructional strategies. We did this as an effort to get teachers talking about teaching. It gives them a consistent vocabulary, let me go ahead and move the slide, gives them a consistent vocabulary that we can use K-12. So this framework applies across the board, whether you teach kindergarten or whether you teach seniors. Again, it's research-based, and we're just talking about what we're teaching. Along with that, it has allowed us to have a focused professional development model. So in 2324, we spent a lot of time talking about what is the direct instruction and what is the gradual release model. So those are the two pieces that we focused on last year, and we did, we spent a lot of time talking about the research behind it, why it's what's best for kids, and then what that looks like if you're going to use that in your instructional design. And then this year, we're going to stick with that theme and really focus on application, making sure that we're revisiting those concepts, that teachers are thinking about these concepts when they're planning for students, and that it's improving our overall instructional experience for our kids. Another thing I want to mention is, we are talking about the direct instruction and gradual release, but we also know that there are, if you look at the model, there are all kinds of best practices that our teachers already do every day. So we don't ignore those either. At the beginning of the year, we talked a lot about building relationships. So we have a focus area, but we also touch on all of these areas whenever it's appropriate. And on that note, I'm going to let these lovely ladies share what they do.
As Krista said, we want every building to be on the same page about Lakota's instructional framework, or LIF, because you know, educators love acronyms. So for our monthly professional development, our team created and presented at each building on the five aspects of Marzano and the Lakota Instructional Framework. The first one was gradual release of responsibility with the I do, we do, you do. I would say that that was the bulk of my coaching cycles last year, even for our veteran teachers, because I felt like everyone could use a little bit of work in that area, and I feel like it really helped tighten up our instruction. The second one was just clear learning goals so that the teachers and the students always knew what that goal was that we were reaching for in our lessons each day. Also chunking content by using pre-assessments and making sure that all of our instruction was in manageable pieces for our students. And then finally, sessions four and five were more about representing the content and making sure that the content was engaging and students had time to process that content in between parts of the lesson. And as I said, we wanted every building to be on the same page, so that meant from math class to music class, we had the same structure of the lessons and the same vocabulary. And then for our professional development days, there were some things that we had to do from the state, but everything that we did, subject-based, was designed around the Lakota Instructional Framework and keeping that in the forefront at all times.
In addition to the monthly professional development we offer teachers, we give them opportunities to extend that learning into the classroom and to demonstrate that learning with us. We've sort of come up with a badge system, gamification of their learning experience. This is in every building's challenge accepted course, all of these different badges that relate directly to those monthly professional developments that we were offering, and it makes them take their learning and apply it, just like we would ask our students to do.
And now, I would love to talk to you about Woodland Elementary. We have made like tremendous growth at Woodland, and a lot of it, the last few years, the six, last six or seven years, we have done a lot of digging into the standards and making sure we're personalized learning for every student by doing small groups in almost every single classroom in Woodland. And our building growth, last year even took it to the new level by using the Lakota Instructional Framework. I feel like we even went to a higher level of excellence. And here's some stats for you. We went from, the star system just started in the last few years, but last, the last couple of years, we were four, and this, last year, we were four and a half stars out of five at Woodland, so I'm just completely stoked about that. Our value added went from two to four stars in the last few years, and last year, all of our subgroups met their achievement goals set by the state. So you cannot even imagine how happy we are, and we have not shared this with our staff yet, but like I, like I'm very, very excited to share this with our staff. And so speaking of our staff, I'd like to talk to you about our teacher, Amy Dockerty. She's a third grade math teacher at Woodland. She's one of those teachers that you would love to have your own children to be in her class. She loves kids. She always wants to be better. Every time I send out an email, like, who wants to do a coaching cycle? Me! She's like, I don't have anything in mind right now, but let me know if there's something you want to coach me on. Like, Amy. But we did do a few structured coaching cycles together. The first one was about number talks because she saw that her students needed help getting better at mental math. We took a pre-assessment. I went into her class for six weeks, three days a week, to do number talks in the morning. She replicated the lesson in the afternoon. At the end, we did a post-assessment. The kids did amazing. We were jumping up and down and hugging each other in the classroom, like, look at their data, look at their data. Right? So she's just amazing. The next year, she heard that we were piloting illustrative and talking about it as a possible thing coming down the pike, and she's like, I just really want to do this. So we did that as our next coaching cycle together because again, she just really wants to do better and do anything she can for our students. And so I'm going to let you talk about how she, we took the coaching cycles, her love of learning, and illustrative, and added that extra piece of the Lakota Instructional Framework in there to make a spectacular year last year. This is her video.
I approached Kim earlier about doing a coaching cycle, and that was even before that, about number talks, and she was so helpful, and I felt such success in that coaching cycle that when I heard about illustrative math, I immediately, or she approached me, or I approached her, I can't even remember which, but she really helped me to dive in to the framework of illustrative math. We actually went and watched another teacher in district who was using it, and it was just so nice to have somebody there with me because in teaching, the thing we lack is time. And it just seems overwhelming, but when there's somebody there alongside you and saying, hey, let's go watch somebody, or let's look at how we can implement this, it just really helps you focus in, and it seems doable. And I could implement it immediately. And illustrative, there are a lot of things that I really find helpful. One is the learning goals. They're in the slides for me. They're right there, and so that's always one less thing to do. It already tells the students and it alerts them to what we'll be doing for the day, and it just really keeps us focused. It also is really set up for the gradual release. It has the I do, and then the we do is the whole group lesson, and then the you do, I really have the children doing that in small group with me, or also while I'm working with a small group, then it allows time for them to do the you do with the math also. So that's been, it just really laid out perfectly. They align really well. Keeps me on track, keeps you focused, because as we know, you can go on the internet and there's a million things to do, and you can really get off course, but having the framework and to be able to refer back to that really is helpful.
Isn't she great?
Yeah.
I wish she could be here in real life, but. I'll tell her. She's.
I'm going to be spotlighting Andre Philpot from Liberty Junior. She's a seventh grade science teacher. And prior to the Lakota Instructional Framework, she had been working really hard on personalized learning, which had been a push in our district for a few years. When the framework came out, she was very nervous about where her strategies that she had been using for personalized learning would connect and tie into everything. So we did some work together. She did some research and learning on her own as well, and she was able to come up with this choice board for a wave unit where she did the direct instruction at the beginning of the unit, but then for the rest of the progression with the we do, you do, and you do, group, whole group and individual, she personalized that for students by allowing them to have choice. So at the beginning of the choice board, they actually work in small groups while she walks around, monitors understanding, provides on-the-spot instruction as needed for students who might not be going quite the right direction that she needs them to be going with that learning objective. Then they move on to working independently. Both of those steps are formative assessments, and then the final step, she actually has them grade that portion of, so that they have reps and opportunities to practice before that impacts their grade. So she was really able to take the personalized learning strategy she'd been working hard on and combine that with our instructional framework.
Who would like to start with questions? Christina, do you want to start?
Sure. Thank you for all of that information. It was really little to read. I was trying to like scroll in and read it on my computer. What led you to decide on the Marzano framework? There's so many frameworks out there and so much research. What led you to Marzano?
Yeah, so last year, under the leadership of Dr. Lali, she came in and was actually doing classroom visits and making her way throughout the district, and we had all worked really hard on the personalized learning framework, as was mentioned. And so our students were really, that when she would go into classrooms, she shared that she would see students on their pathways, doing their things. One of the things that was actually seemed to be missing was that direct instruction piece. We were allowing students to jump in and learn, and they were really enjoying it, but the teacher was facilitating more. And so just drawing us back to that focus on direct instruction, and Marzano was a huge advocate of that, and how you chunk, how you allow kids time to process, and then how you allow them to record and represent. So we, our personalized learning was a fabulous model and still is, but this framework actually in doing a crosswalk, looking at the strategies that we allowed them to pursue during our personalized learning movement, really aligned well, and it didn't conflict with what they were already doing. It just showed that, just pulled out the pieces that maybe they needed to focus a little bit more on, and that's where that started.
Great. I loved hearing from Amy and hearing about what Andre, did I say that right? Andre, are doing in their classroom. How are we ensuring that this is happening in every classroom and making sure that this is something that carries deep and not wide?
Yes, so you'll hear a little bit later also when we talk about the report card, but this has been the focus of our mandatory monthly PDs, along with our professional development days, along with the coaching cycles and support that our coaches are providing inside every school. So when we do the monthly professional developments, it's a K-12 model, and what we're doing right now is working with Emily and her team, and Andrew and his team, even for the curriculum adoptions, to make sure that all of these pieces are aligned. And when we're talking about parts of the curriculum adoptions, we're layering in where Marzano lines up and where they can see that vocabulary continue to come up. So we have, for our upcoming professional development day, we have created a Marzano session for all of our teachers who are not in the curriculum adoptions because we've already aligned that work. So art, music, science, all of those subjects use this instructional framework. Like one of these lovely ladies said, it is our consistent communication, it's our consistent language that allows all of our teachers to see themselves in this framework and to be able to do what's best for kids, so.
So is this connected in any way to their teacher evaluation?
So the Marzano also aligns with the OTES rubric, so you can go in and in all of those areas that they get evaluated on, this can be their evidence. And so we've given them lesson design kind of audits that they can look at, but then also ways that they can go in and show evidence of what they're doing. And the badges that align with the Marzano framework can also be used as evidence for OTES to show that they're improving their instruction.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you for sharing everything. Broadly, just a comment and a question. It's great to see the work that's being done across the district, and it shows that things don't just happen by chance, that it takes intentionality and teamwork and time and education and development, and I really appreciate that. I think one of the things that I really, really appreciated, the Liberty Junior example, in that there's too often, as we make changes, and change is scary, and even articulated how the teacher felt, that we quickly move away from things that have been working for us. And especially lately, we fall into a lot of false choices, like is it rigor or is it innovation? Is it personalized learning or is it direct instruction? The ability to manage that change and not just be able to integrate it with what we've already know and vocabulary that we use as teachers, but then to also show the support for those teachers who are making that change, I think is really, really, really beneficial. And I really appreciate it that we're not just doing the big pendulum swings to something new, the latest flavor, but actually enhancing what we have and on a continual progress. And the one question I had was, and it's probably more focused on the first example, but it's a question broadly. With so much focus in on personalized learning and especially small group work as a way of making this come to life, how well do our facilities help support that small group work? Classrooms, facilities, arrangements for learning, or are there opportunities there that we could do to help enhance that as we think through with the Master Facilities Plan?
I mean, you know, we'd always love a bigger classroom. But I think our teachers are really good at making it work. I mean, that teacher, if you saw the picture of her, she makes her small groups, she only does three groups because she just wants to keep it very tight. And so when she pulls her small group that's differentiated three times, she does three groups a day, every single day, and she pulls them to her table, and it's a long table. She's standing there with her easel, and she has an eye on what every single student is doing at that exact moment. So she has her routine down, whereas when I taught, I needed five groups. I needed them all very differentiated. I need them all to be doing their thing, and so it's, I think it's just a matter of how the teacher wants to set it up. But again, just making sure that we have the space to have those rooms would be great. And I think Liberty Junior is unique in that it is the class size must be a little.
Can you come to the mic?
Yeah, can you go to the mic because people at home can't hear you a few things?
Sorry. The physical classroom spaces at Liberty do tend to be a little bit smaller considering how large their population is in that building. As Kim mentioned, right, the teachers, they make it work and they do a great job making it work, but I do think at some point with the Master's Facility Plan in place, and I know Liberty Junior is one of the buildings being looked at very closely, I think we need to maybe come up with and brainstorm some ways in the meantime. We can make that space work well for teachers. Our admin have been great and very supportive in that area. And I think also moving forward, just looking at not only the facility itself, but some of those resources built into the facility, furniture, things like that would be super helpful. but some of those resources built into the facility, furniture, things like that would be super helpful for our teachers.
Great. Thank you. I appreciate the candor.
Yeah, thank you so much for sharing. It's exciting to hear that you guys have figured out another way that is going to help your strategy to be successful. The question I'm going to ask is, this was like a pilot, right? There was Andrea and Amy, were the only... Was it the entire?
They're just examples. I could have pulled many teacher examples from our building. But for the sake of time and our spotlight, we each picked one teacher. But across the board, teachers are implementing these things in their classrooms pretty effectively.
Awesome. Thank you so much. I thought it was a pilot. Yeah, so thanks so much for sharing and it's good that we figured things out and we're, we're going to continue to ensure that all our buildings are implementing and all the teachers are implementing it. Thank you.
Thank you girls so much. We appreciate you coming. Just a couple of questions, a little bit to build on Christina's. The people like Amy and Andrea, they're doing wonderful jobs. And I know we have many, many teachers that are doing wonderful jobs. Are we taking some of those that are really latching onto this and having them kind of mentoring teachers who might be young teachers or teachers who maybe are a little resistant to change? Are we using, utilizing a peer-to-peer kind of training with them?
Yeah, so there's a couple bonuses to actually the implementation of this last year. And that is, we know right now, there's a big load, especially on our teachers that teach ELA and math with the new adoptions. And what this has provided is again, a common language and a consistency. They, they see things in the new curriculum that are familiar from last year and that they know, a lot of these things, like I said, are things that they, a lot of us learned about Dr. Marzano in college. And so we did have some pushback when we first rolled this out, like, why are you bringing this back up? I learned this 25 years ago. But that's all the more reason that we want to focus on it, because it's still around and it's still research-based and it's still getting the results that we're looking for. We do provide peer visits. So we have a program in Lakota called Passport Program. And so when our coaches are working with someone, if they know there's a connection in the building, obviously, we're going to make that connection right away. But we also come together as a team and look for connections across the district. Doesn't have to even be the same grade level. We've sent high school teachers to elementary classrooms and vice versa. But if we know that there are folks that have that strength, then we allow them to, we figure out how to get them coverage and allow them to go in and observe and collaborate with that person, so that they can see it happens in Lakota. A lot of times, we can provide examples for teachers, but they like to see people in their district, in their building, or in their grade band that are doing these things. We also have a cohort right now called the Marzano High Reliability Teacher. And so we have a group of teachers who have gone through that. They went through it all last year and they're finishing it up this year and they will be certified in Marzano. And they also will become our model classrooms, so that when we need teachers to see this, we've got folks that we know have been through the research with Marzano. They've been, they have to video themselves teaching. Marzano grades it and sends it back to say like, yes, you're doing this the way it needs to be done. So those teachers will also be a resource.
Well, I'll just add that Andre had actually participated in the Passport Experience shortly before we rolled out the Lakota Instructional Framework. And she went to go see a Passport with a science teacher at the high school, who was doing personalized learning really, really well. And so she was looking to bring those elements in. And that's why I think she was a little nervous about the instructional framework and making sure that we can connect the dots, because she had invested so much work in personalizing the experience for kids. But as we've said, it, it all connects really, really well.
So one of the examples, I think I used this when I was teaching, like, and that's been 100 years ago. I'm that old. I noticed that what she has done also is something that always concerns me when we roll out a program that's so specific, is not losing the art of teaching. And it seems that she has developed the art of teaching within her science of teaching by doing things that way. So I am really glad to see that we've still left some room for the art of teaching within the framework. So thank you.
Yeah, I would also chime in and say that when we rolled this out to staff, we really asked them to put their instructional designer cap on, because they are, we can have all kinds of tools and really great curriculums, but they are the most important thing in that classroom when it comes to students.
Thank you.
Dr. Whitley, anything you'd like to add?
I just wanted to write, first of all, thank you very, very much. I think to Doug's point, we often live in worlds of dichotomies, right? It's one or the other. And, and I said this to a group the other day in a listening session. You can have alignment and the art of teaching. It is not an or, right? And so when you talk about, it made me smile, when you talked about getting on the internet, right? Marzano is research-based, right? Tried and true. You don't have to think, is this going to work? You don't have to look at its effect size. Like it is solid, rock-solid teaching that produces results. And then it aligns beautifully with the OTES model, because there is that art of teaching, the personalization, the differentiation, the knowing your students and the climate and all of their data. And so it really takes that structure, plus that instructional design, to be able to cater to the students sitting in front of you within that framework. And I think that's what makes this model so beautiful.
Thank you. I just had one question on the professional development. So it's, is the professional development then consistent amongst all staff? Or is there any differentiation based on those who may have demonstrated more successful results that they're modeling for others? Or is it just the same for others?
Yeah, so last year, as we were doing our initial implementation of it, we had, we created slides that were K-12 friendly, so the vocabulary was the same, the concepts were the same. We altered examples to be grade band friendly, because obviously it's going to look a little bit different in a kindergarten classroom, although the strategies are the same. The examples do look different. What we've done in the badging options that Tiffany has shown, what we did is we have a challenge-accepted professional development course that all of our teachers are enrolled in. It's specific to their building. And we created those badges, because what that does is it allows teachers to jump in where they are. If someone wants to take it further, there's learning aligned with that. And, and those badges focus on not only the learning, but the application of learning. So they submit examples of things that they've done to earn the badges. And what we've done is even within the, like, when we launched the first three days of school, we had professional development and we called it the top 10 questions for the first 10 weeks. And it was, each one was a Marzano concept. We talked about relationships, how you set up your classroom. That's the best thing about the Marzano framework, is that it really encompasses the full experience for kids. It's not just about direct instruction. It's about everything from the minute they walk in that door and make eye contact with you, until the time that they leave. So knowing that everybody is in a little bit of a different place, we had a lot of new teachers this year and we have a whole separate program that we're working on for them. But knowing that everyone was in a different place, we really allowed them to have the flexibility to jump into whatever area. The first five were really focused on like the start of school and relationships, routines and procedures. Like how do you establish that in your class so you can be productive in the time that you have? And then the, the back five questions, there were 10 of them, the back five questions were really instructional-focused. If you feel really good about the structure of your classroom, you know your routines and procedures are going to be in place, then you can start thinking about my lesson design. How am I going to be interacting with kids? How am I going to move through these lessons and what that looks like? So we do provide opportunities for teachers to step in where they are. And then obviously, the teacher leaders support that from, from that point.
I had a staff member share with me, they're like, you know, it's a heavy lift this year with the new curriculum and everything that we're doing. But then they said, but we're working together in a way I've never seen. East and west teachers are meeting together. We're all in it together. And that that's been the nice thing, that they're, everyone recognizes it's too big of a lift to do individually and are really relying on their peers. So I was, that was a great thing to hear, so. If there's nothing else, is there any other questions? If we could ask you to join us up front for a moment. All right, we're going to move to the Butler Tech Report. And I, of course, left my notes on my desk at home, but I do have a couple of things I brought. Just a reminder that October 17th is the ribbon cutting for the new aviation education hangar. We also did have the ribbon cutting this last week for the Butler Tech Bioscience Building Expansion. That's expanding by 30,000 square feet. So everyone's very excited about that opportunity. And it was great at the ribbon cutting to have so many officials, not only from the partnerships from the state, the county, and the local governments have all really supported this, as well as our Chamber of Commerce and different businesses. So I will save the rest of the detail until our next meeting, but did want to just highlight those two things.
What time is the aviation?
It's at nine o'clock at the Middletown Airport, nine to 10:30 on the 17th. And with that, we'll move to community engagement.
Do you want to go first?
Sure. So we just had our community conversation on cellphone use slash potential policy changes, where we reviewed our existing cellphone policy or personal device policy, as it's titled. That was originally created in 2013 with some updates in 2017. And it feels amazingly dated when you read through it. So I think we all feel that this is good work. There was robust conversation. We took several people through different, or we took groups of different stakeholders through different convers, or different scenarios to get reactions and how they would approach those scenarios. What was, what came through was there was a great variety of frameworks and experiences that people were drawing on to wind up in very different places on, on what's appropriate and what they'd like to see. And so I think what we've done is we had the thought exchange. We have certain things that are floating to the top as far as the key issues. And we'll be looking at that as we go forward to understand. Broadly, some of the tensions were the need for consistency across buildings and across classrooms, but then still a desire to have flexibility for individual accommodations. And then also, I would say that there is a lot of attention around security and in cases of a safety incident, what would happen there. I think that's where, what the call to us is, let's make sure that we really understand the really real with our partners at the, at the different safety groups, the Butler County Sheriff and the Westchester Township. But moving forward, we've got more work to be done as far as crafting what a potential policy would look like, as well as making sure we have the right administrative guidelines in place to, for that to be enforced in school. And so I think our design is that roughly January, hopefully, we'll have some ideas around where we're going to land and be able to help share that out and get feedback. And our goal is to make sure that we've got this in place in the March-April timeframe. So then that way, all the plans for next year can be in place without any surprises going into the school year.
Yeah, one of the things we want to do to make sure that we have it in place is, Dr. Whitley, we talked about it at our meeting, is that, so that we can make sure when the policy comes out and the guidelines around it, that we change everything we need to change. Like it's in our student handbook, it's in our staff handbook, it's on all of our website. So we want to make sure we have enough time to make sure that we have it in place in all the places that it needs to be in place. Like Doug said, and we knew going in, we were going to get opinions across the board, which we did. And we are still at some point going to do a survey, but we are waiting until we have some more input from like administrators and staff, because they're very much important. We heard that a lot of people want some sort of policy. They, they don't want their child's education to be distracted, but it's a broad range of what that looks like. And like we said, the policy is the overarching bubble and the administrative guidelines will be how the policy is dictated within each building, because obviously the guidelines on how you do the policy in 912 is going to look different than a K-2 building. So those kind of things are all things we want to get in place. Like Doug said, we don't want to do this, it's July 1st is when the state mandates we have to have it. We don't want to wait until June 30th. We want to make sure we're ahead of the game so we can explain it to everybody. Also, in community engagement, last week, we talked about we are still going forward on November 20th. I had this written down and I too have my notes at home. 20th, right? For an ELL conversation, or an ESL conversation. We are still working on the parameters around that, whether it's going to be one language at a time, whether we're going to try to do more than one language with interpreters. We're still ironing it out, but we do have that date on the calendar. I think that's it.
And can I just ask a question on that policy? So are we also, besides just pulling in the community conversation, the thought exchange, we're going to be pulling in some data as well?
Yes, so...
We all have some.
As Kelly mentioned, we will engage with administrators, so principals and assistant principals around October 24th, kind of walking them through that same scenario. So just from a very heavy staff member perspective at the administrative level. Then that survey will go out to students, to staff and parents to get an additional layer. What we're hoping is after we've gone through this first kind of layer, that will rise some things to the top. We can dig deeper than in that survey on some specific things and get some quantitative data to couple with our qualitative data. But then also on top of that, research, right? Research-based, just like we talked about with our instructional framework, making sure that we don't have it grounded in emotion, but rather in factual data. And then also, we do have some schools around us that have kind of blazed the way, if you will, and made those changes really early. And so looking at the success or maybe the growth opportunities that still exist in some of their policies, we can kind of learn from that and capitalize and pull those all in, so that we can make the most informed decision in around that January timeframe.
Any other questions? All right, hearing none, we'll move to finance. Would you like to start, Isaac?
Yeah, we met on Friday with Liberty Township Leadership. We have good partnership with the leadership, Westchester and Liberty Townships. Basically, anything that is going to impact the school district, definitely they will give us those informations. So as we met with them, they gave us their, their plan for expansion of Milliken Way. The detailed financing plan, the deadline, and how it's going to impact our, I mean, our, our districts, the schools around that, that way. They gave us a lot of information, the budget and the planning and everything, that it's going to start very soon. So that's much of the time was spent on that.
And we will be having a board presentation, that same presentation that we saw in finance will be coming to us on the October 28th, so that we can all get an overview of what that Milliken Interchange Project would be and what that impact that could have on the school district, so that we are as prepared as possible.
Yep, and they spoke, I mean, they think, they said this came up originally in 2007. So it's been long in the works. And it is very exciting that they are very strong partners with the district, making sure that we are whole, any money that's not paid upfront is paid in the backend. They've demonstrated that previously in previous TIF agreements that they've made. So it really is going to be a positive partnership for both of us. They're being very deliberate and they're looking at every piece of this and making sure even what type of development's going to be there. And it's nice to know that you're working with somebody who not only is talking the talk, but has previously walked the walk with, being good partners with the district, so.
And you, you will see at the October 28th meeting, they'll bring that forward, do a presentation and then need additional approval, because it is a slight expansion of the current TIF agreement. So looking at it from a, they're looking at it from a bigger perspective of once the development comes, then they'll have more room to kind of go back, recalibrate and rezone to keep everything very appropriate. But it's very exciting for the district, using the 75 corridor to open that up, open up more land for development and help sustain the community. So it's very exciting to come.
Speaking of partnership, the best partnership is when you walk into a meeting doused in color, run color, and there's no judgment and the city is there, right? So again, wonderful partnership of accepting exactly where we are.
Dr. Whitley had come directly from the color run at Liberty Junior into the meeting and she had fully participated in the color run, so it was awesome.
I think I forgot that we had guests at finance when I walked in. I was like, oh, hello.
Fairly noticeable.
So one of the questions I even forgot to ask that I was going to be asking them is, is going to take up to 2029 for the completion of the road? How is that going to impact the transportation within that area?
And I think, Isaac, that's a perfect question. I think particularly with where we are potentially in master facilities, plus that project coming together.
Exactly.
We would have to be very proactive in making sure that we plan accordingly. Get with our transportation department really early on, so that they can understand those routes and letting our families know that routes might look a little bit differently and might impact times. So as soon as we have our master facilities plan kind of laid out a little bit... So as soon as we have our master facilities planned kind of laid out a little better and they have some finality, I think that would start, we'll start having those conversations very, very early.
All right, anything else from finance? Moving on to policy.
I'm going to represent Mr. Vogelmann tonight. So the Board Policy Committee met this Friday on October fourth, and there were two policies that were reviewed for a first read that are on the agenda for tonight. The first one is Policy fourteen fifteen. And really, we're here just clarifying language on severance pay for administrators within their accumulated sick leave. So really, it's differentiating between continuous employment and uncontinuous employment and how that impacts severance. The second policy is fourteen thirty-two, and that's really just cleaning up some language per our legal guidance on administrators and the use of a sick leave donation bank. That language was actually put in place last spring. We are actually just reverting back to the original language, so going back before last spring. There's nothing new added. We're just reverting back to the change prior before the change. Any questions about those two policies before I give a couple of other updates? We are waiting for the fall update from Neola to come out at any time. Normally, that comes out in September. Neola is still working through some of those pieces, and so we're expecting to see numerous updates. Do some activity in Columbus around House bills and Senate bills, one of which I know you've seen in my weekly update around Senate Bill twenty-nine. There will be some major changes to policies and administrative guidelines in that regard. There are four other policies that we reviewed on Friday during Policy Committee, and we're getting some legal advice about those. So you should be seeing those at the same time we see the fall update from Neola. And then all the policies that were voted or approved at the August twenty-sixth board meeting have been updated and are live and ready in board docs. And then our next policy meeting is scheduled for Friday, November first. So lots of things yet to come from Neola in that fall update that will really encompass everything, and then we'll bring the additional four that we had questions with, with legal interpretation at that same time.
Thank you. Any questions for Dr. Whitley? All right, well, we have community and committee conversation meeting dates on the agenda as always, so you can always take a look at those. And now what we've all been anxiously waiting for, it's time for the report card presentation.
I feel like this should be a cannon, like a graduation, spewing out confetti.
And you do have a printed out version of this at your, at your station. There's just so much rich, wonderful data in there. We wanted you to see it up close and personal.
I love it.
Good evening. Hello? All right, I'm going to stay on script so we can manage our time well. But good evening. Thank you for having us tonight. I want to take a moment to just say thank you for your continued support, and we're excited to share all of our positive results with you tonight. Before we start, I want to also thank all of Lakota's students, teachers, administrators, parents, for all the hard work. We've seen that pay off, and we're really excited about that. Several of our curriculum and instruction team are here tonight to help with the presentation, and I'm so grateful for their time, energy, dedication, and everything that they bring to Lakota students and staff every day. The progress we'll be sharing tonight is definitely the result of many hands. Okay, our presentation will focus on two main buckets, our results, the actual data and numbers, and then how those results were achieved, in our opinion. Of course, there's a great variety of factors that contributed to our success, so we tried to organize them into themes that you will hear about in a few more minutes. At this point, I'd like to invite Justin Wilson to come up and explain our data for each component. He has done a fantastic job stepping up into this work and organizing our data. You'll see an explanation for each component in the slides, but for the presentation's sake tonight, we're going to skip over the slides that explain how the state calculates the components and just stick to Lakota-specific data. But anytime you can stop us and ask for explanation on that calculation. So feel free to jump in with those questions as those come up. So I'm going to pass it over to Justin.
All right, well, thank you all. And again, yeah, we've all been smiling as well about a lot of good things that we've seen here in this, in this report card. So as you all know, the state report card, they have, there's five components that are involved in it. They're all there on your screen there, achievement and progress. You have gap closing, early literacy, and our graduation report. And each of those, each has, comes together to give a rating for both the district as well as individual schools. How those ultimately though come together for the ultimate overall rating though is based upon weights. And as you can see, achievement and progress are weighted heavier than the other three, as well they should be, as achievement, again, is how well our students do perform on Ohio State assessments, as well as the progress which measures their growth from year to year. And those two really are driving factors for the other three. You'll also note that while the district has all five components, some of our individual schools won't have all five of those. Our early childhood, you might have noticed in the slide presentation that you've previewed, they don't have achievement or progress because those students are not yet taking Ohio State tests in the early grades. Or, for example, of course, the high school, they wouldn't have an early literacy. So those are the components that bring together our overall report card. And then through a series of advanced analytics, we know that they come together around the star rating system from a one to a five, five being the highest. And schools and districts' overall component can go up by point fives, halves at a time as well, and the components are always one point oh at a time in stars. So here is again a snapshot of our overall, each of the components. This is Lakota from this past school year, our most recent report card. You can see we are overall a four point five stars. We are going to look at each of those briefly here in these next few slides. And the biggest point of celebration indeed is to go from a three point five overall to four point five overall as a district. We are exceedingly excited about that, to make a full star jump. We did note that a lot of schools in Ohio did make some jumps this year, but the fact that we also moved in rank from three hundred and thirtieth to one hundred and eleventh tells you just how exceptional that advancement was in a one-year period of time. Five of six of our ECSs increased their rating, four of eight elementaries, three or four junior highs. East and West also made some gains as well. So overall, just incredible, big-picture success that we see. Okay, the next piece, again, I won't spend too much time on the explanation parts, but achievement again is simply that. It is how our students do on these tests, not just passing, but just how well do our students perform. And that's based off of a metric called performance index. Last year, our performance index, which is a combination of all the tests that are taken at all the grade levels, was a ninety-three. We did increase to a ninety-four point six this year. And a big component for that is the number of students that aren't just performing proficient, but are performing at an accomplished or advanced level, or in some cases, when available, the advanced plus, which is available in some cases when a student is taking a course a year earlier than what they would normally do. So like our eighth graders who take Algebra One, again, in junior high versus high school. But as you can see, again, our numbers aren't just about proficiency, but they're about really pushing our kids to be at their highest possible level. So with that increase, we maintained a solid four, which again exceeds state standards in academic achievement. So a solid four stars. Our rank did still increase from one seventy-eight to one forty-eight. And what I really appreciate most is this graph over time from twenty-twenty to twenty-twenty-four. You'll see those bars at the top, which represent our advanced and our accomplished and our advanced. You notice from twenty-twenty all the way across that those numbers continue to get larger and larger. So that's showing that we are not just, again, getting our students to pass, but they're really achieving at their highest possible levels. We're really pushing our students to achieve and to grow. And again, three of eight elementaries also increased this rating this year. Progress is probably the most complex in terms of the analytics behind it. It is simply seeing how our students grow from year to year. And as you recall, this was the area of the greatest deficit for us and the area of greatest emphasis that you hear a lot about in part two of our presentation. We did have a solid four stars this year. There will be more detailed data that will come out later this month because it's so complex in the way that the data works in this, the statistics that are involved. The state partners with another organization, EVOS System, and so we'll get more advanced analytics. But we do know our overall score is a four star. And we moved all the way from two stars to four stars. We had a two-full-star rating increase over one year. We went from a gain index that was severely in the negative to a gain index that is solidly in the positive. Five of eight elementaries increased their rating, three or four junior highs, and West all increased, others maintained. We did a really phenomenal job there. As you can see, our state rank, kind of our mark that we had our heads held down last year, that six oh one that was ingrained in everybody's mind, well, we've moved to one fifty-two in a matter of one year.
That deserves applause.
And we're excited that this trend is going to continue because this data, this rating is actually based on three years' worth of data. So fifty percent is this last year, but there's also twenty-five and twenty-five for the previous two. So if we have another good year of solid growth and we knock off that, one of those bad years, we're going to continue to see that number increase. So really, really something we're very pleased to see. Okay, gap closing is a pretty complex measure that includes both achievement and as well as progress. And it does that over a course of our subgroups. Subgroups are subsections of our population as defined by the state. Any subsection of a population, a subgroup that has fifteen or more students in a district then officially counts as a subgroup. And because of Lakota's great size and diversity, we have nine different subgroups, considerably more than a lot of other districts do. But of all those subgroups, then we get ratings on all these different things that you see listed on there, including gifted, ELA in math, achievement and progress, and so on and so forth. So we're not going to look at all those metrics here tonight, but we will point out a few highlights because this is the busiest slide, the busiest screen in this presentation. When you probably looked at it, you're like, whoa, there's a lot on there. And yes, there is, so we'll take a look at just certain pieces of it. As you can see, our overall gap closing rating is five stars. I did want to highlight, and Lauren Webb's going to talk a little bit more specific with gifted in a little bit. What is important to note is in these point sections here, this zero to five, those three gifted metrics are all or nothing. You can't earn a one, a two, a three, or a four. You either earn zero or five. So even if you are just on the cusp of meeting the goal, you still would end up with a zero, which is exactly the case with our PI here. But we did make the value-added, the progress piece. Okay, so again, overall, we moved up as a district from four to five stars. Five of six ECSs maintained their five stars, seven of eight elementaries maintained four or five. Four of four junior schools increased or maintained. East increased their rating as well, while West maintained. And the rank went from three fifty-two to thirty-one. Again, a lot of that driven by the exceptional progress, but it's not just exceptional progress, it is exceptional progress across all of the different subgroups within our very large and wonderful diverse district. How we got some of those additional points that really helped us grow was in the ELA in math. We were already achieving a lot of our achievement points, which by the way is still impressive because that's a moving target. Every year, it's higher and higher bar that you have to meet, and we continue to meet that. But we are also now meeting many of those progress points where we have to show that not just did the kids grow, but they have to grow to a positive two on this gain index, which is, which is a significant mark. So it's not just a year's growth, but it's really showing an exceptional amount of moving forward. While our students with disabilities, they didn't quite meet the positive two that was necessary for the point. They still had exceptional gains from negatives into the positives. And so that's a great point of celebration as well. And I'm going to pass over to Lauren for a moment.
Thanks. Evening. As Justin said, it lives in gap closing and then follows kind of the same pieces with the performance and then progress. So I'll first share, again, it's a moving, it's been a moving target. So for the last three years, it's moved every year, being more difficult. But if you see off to the right, it shows every time. Those Lakota teachers and those gifted teachers really working hard to meet those. I will share that we do have a plan in place with some action steps because we are so close to this. I know that we can make it this year. And I think it's also a wonderful opportunity to say thank you to this board for providing more gifted teachers to help with this work. I also share that gifted progress is really difficult. Our gifted students are really difficult to grow because they're already achieving at that really high level. So to get them to grow past that full year's worth of growth takes a lot of work. And I want to celebrate the fact that they grew from two to four stars this past year. It's just amazing work in it. Thanks to the teachers for working so hard. The last part or component of this part of the report card is gifted ID and service. I will share only six districts in the state met all of the indicators in this component, so just sharing that with you. It is a lot of other pieces to it, so it's not just identification and service. There's a representation index. I will say we do have opportunity for growth in how we identify and serve our students from economically disadvantaged backgrounds. Really exciting, sharing a short story with you. We've been spending time in our second-grade classrooms before they take the INVIEW test, which is the cognitive abilities assessment. If you know anything about that, if you've never done analogies as a second grader, your capabilities aren't going to show up on one of those second-grade tests. And so we're visiting every single classroom with the gifted team and showing some of those students that may not have had access to those types of puzzles before that access before they take the INVIEW. So as part of our work with that last piece that we're missing, we are working toward that this year. I will say the vision of providing more opportunities for gifted students through training our teachers and leveraging the GIS expertise has landed Lakota as top ten by niche for gifted service. So in the past, if you're looking for homes and, you know, some of those pieces, especially if you have gifted students, you can look into how different districts are rated. Lakota is now in the top ten, so very excited. Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to move us on to the early literacy rating. This screen just explains a little background about the three components that go into the early literacy rating, and I'll talk about those in just a second. So here's our overall score. We earned three stars. And I want to share, it's highlighted in yellow there. The cutoff, the percentage for criteria for four stars was seventy-eight percent. And as you can see, we missed it by point one percent. So that was a, ah, but it was a great growth measure for us, too. While it's up from seventy-three point five last year, it's definitely something we want to hit next year for sure. Our improving literacy percent, which is showing how many K-three students moved from off-track from the previous year onto on-track this year, increased from thirty-three point four percent last year up to fifty-three point eight percent. So that was a huge gain, which accounted a lot for our overall gain towards those four stars, almost those four stars. Our proficiency percentage and our promotion to fourth grade percentages maintained that kind of solid level that they've been. So on this next slide, you can kind of see that we've, we've got three stars, but you do see that our state rank improved from the three twelve to the two twenty-eight. Six of our six ECS, all of our early childhood buildings increased their rating, which was amazing. And six of the eight elementaries increased or maintained their rating there.
Just briefly to touch on graduation rate, we continue to exceed at a nice four-star rating there with both East and West and all that we're doing there. It continues to be a high number. We tend to see that students, the longer they're in Lakota, the more successful they are and right on target. Students that are here, you know, throughout their Lakota career, most of it. Sometimes we have students that come out into Lakota a little bit later in their career. They come with more at-risk factors that may impact things. But we do an exceptional job in our counselors and all of our high school teams at making sure our kids get across that line and are, and are ready for what's beyond. Which leads us to this last metric before we get into comparisons. What was not a part of those five components that we looked at at the beginning is a sixth component that will be added, particularly for our high schools, either this year or next year. The state's still kind of debating how they're going to rate it. But it's the College Career Workforce Military Readiness Component, CCWM for short. And essentially, it does exactly what it says. It's a way to statistically analyze whether your graduates are ready for life beyond their high school diploma. And what we found is, when they started to introduce the metrics behind this that they were going to use, Lakota wasn't favoring very well. And we thought to ourselves, Andrew, Justin, I, and the Secondary Curriculum Department, we said, well, this is not at all a reflection of Lakota. We know our graduates are going on to doing really good things. They are very much ready for beyond. So it was just a matter of diving into what are the metrics involved. And we created some very programmatic and systematic changes that Andrew's actually going to speak about in just a little bit. But we've already seen our metric increase by twenty-one percent just in the three-year period in which we've learned about it. So it's just a matter of. So it's just a matter of, of learning and then making the, the right changes to make sure our kids get with them. Then our last three slides for this component are the comparison slides. How do we do compared to others? Well, this is Ohio's similar districts ratings. These are the twenty districts that the state of Ohio determined are most similar to us according to seven different factors, including size, economically disadvantaged ratings, adult workforce, and, and so forth and different things. So zero is us there at the top, one is the, the most like us, twentieth is the, the least like us. And all I simply want to say here is we, we do rather well compared to other similarly populated districts. And in some of these, while they say similar, I can tell you, for example, you know, we, we've all heard of Mason. Well, we have twice the economically disadvantaged population as does Mason. And so we do very, and of course, we have a very large population in Lakota as a whole. And I think that, again, this is just proof that we do a really nice job of meeting all of our kids wherever they're at and, and bringing them forward. Butler County, again, our metrics show that we continue to be a leader. We are by far the largest population in this county as far as school districts. And we are doing very favorably as we can see in our, in our ratings as well. And then lastly is celebration and continuation. The twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three ratings are the white columns. And then the, this past year, twenty-three, twenty-four that we've been going over is the one with the different color codes in it for our districts as well as all of our schools. Anything green highlights an increase in star rating from last year to this year. The yellow is a continuation and red would be a decrease. And so we placed this up there again to highlight that we are celebrating, but we're also not resting on our laurels. We also see there are still areas to improve that we are definitely going to continue to concentrate upon and make sure that, you know, our students and our community is getting the very best value for their education. And with that, I'm going to turn it back over to Lauren.
Okay. Now that you've seen the results of our report card this year, we'd like to take a brief minute to talk about why we believe we've seen these results. After listing out all of the factors from curriculum and instruction point of view, we grouped all our reasons into three main categories. Data work, programmatic or systemic, systemic work, and then mindset, mindset shifts. I would like to invite our four directors to the stage to explain these in more detail. They provide leadership in these areas they are presenting, so I would like to highlight the areas of work they oversee through these slides as well. So I've got Dina Moss, Andrew Wheatley, Emily Herman, and Krista Heidenreich will be coming to the stage.
Hello, good evening. I was wondering if I had to move it. So I'm really excited to share with you some of the data work that's been happening. So watching all these slides, it's, it's big, there's a lot. And somebody has to take this and bring it down to a student level and make it digestible and make it actionable. And that's the work of our team. As a district team, we work with curriculum and we work on our, improving our systems of support, which you may know as MTSS. And with those things, we try to see what do we need to do to help our students? That's the ultimate. How do we help our students improve student outcomes? Whether it is a student that needs more support to meet the standard, or maybe it's a student that needs enrichment to go above and beyond. First of all, when you look at the screen, I want you to focus on the one that's in the center, the OST action plans. And this year, we just call them action plans. These provide a structured process for teacher teams to collect and analyze student assessment data. And then they create plans to drive student growth. The data shows that when our teachers engage with these action plans, student outcomes improve. Because of this, our expectations have increased each year. And this is something we've been doing for a few years, and each year we kind of add to the component and give more ownership to the teachers around their data. So this looks like a data dive with teacher teams, looking at whatever is the most recent data available, whether that's MAP or OST or readiness. I also would like to point out branching minds, which is also shown on the slide. That is a K-eight platform that we use to document all of our interventions and also monitor them. And by using this platform, we're able to make changes quickly and effectively and to get students what they need. And then finally, I want to point out the work that happens with our administrators. So during the spring and summer, we spend a lot of time with our admin teams, looking at their transition data. So they are provided information about all their incoming students, about the strengths and the opportunities for growth. And they use this information to make schedule and programming decisions. And then in the summer, we meet with the, with the principals and APs to also analyze all the data from the year and use that information to set goals for the next year. So as you can see, I've got a lot I could say about this. We just kind of picked a few things, but I am excited because I do think that we have a very positive data culture here. And it's kind of fun to share some of the great things that are happening.
Hi, good evening. All right, so I'm going to talk a little bit about some of the program changes and system changes that we made in our district to continue to help grow our students. And you'll notice next to the bullets on this slide, it has how many years this has been in place or continues to be in place. So all of these things that we have started in the past, we are continuing to work on and grow because we believe that they have really helped our students achieve and continue to grow. So I'm going to speak specifically about K-six. Some of the work that we did was looking at our growth data. We realized that we wanted to make sure that students were in the right level of class to make sure that they were growing. So we took a lot, we, we took time working with our gifted department, working with seven twelve, and looking at how we were placing students in gift, or advanced courses, excuse me. And so we did a lot of work around adjusting that and making sure we were putting children in the right classroom to really challenge them and to make sure that they were growing and learning to their fullest potential. Another thing that happened last year was with the work that we did digging into our new materials, there was a strong focus on standards and looking at specifically with writing our courses of study, what standards were in each grade level and how far to take that. There was a lot of collaboration, vertical collaboration, looking at different grade levels. Where do you take this standard to? And then how do I pick up from there to continue to grow students? So making sure that specifically like in ELA, they're not just revisiting that same skill over and over, but continuing to grow it as the students move through the grade levels. We adopted a new ESL program and adjusted our curriculum that our students learning English are going through. And so we believe that that helped with continuing the work of gap closure. And again, with the, the work that we did with standards, we also dove into the readiness assessments that are with the OST. We did a lot of work with teachers using those as formative assessment to make sure that students were mastering those standards in their grade level and were meeting those end-of-year goals and were ready to take that test in the spring.
So there's a lot of similarities in work between the K-six and seven twelve and our two teams. So I just want to kind of reemphasize the continuity between the scope and sequence work that they were doing. And we also did that similar work at the secondary level, including aligning the readiness assessments into our tested subject areas to make sure that students had that practice and the teachers had that data. I think one thing that's really cool with this presentation, besides the, the great movement we've seen in our data, is that it, remember back to all the presentations of program of study changes we made over the years, and then to finally see those kind of, the reap, the benefits of those changes that we've seen over the years. And so a couple of those things, and it's similar to what Emily was saying, is that we really worked hard over the years at both increasing the offerings of advanced coursework, both in, you know, in all of our secondary buildings through both CCP and AP, but also really making sure that when we have students who meet advanced criteria, that they're getting in those courses. And so that was a lot of work, and we see that. And we see that in the data because of the fact that if the state predicts a student to get at a certain level, they need to be pushed at the right level in order to meet the growth projections that our state is having. We're really seeing those benefits pay off. So increasing those opportunities for advanced students is really important. Well, with that, we've also been able to increase a lot of opportunities for students for targeted support. So working with our staffing and with our schedules to try to find opportunities to create, providing support for students who might need to get what they do to get up to the levels of proficient on the EOCs. So we've also been strategic in our staffing for high-impact courses, you know, really taking a look at our student numbers in the secondary area and making sure that we're staffing appropriately, have the right number of students each class, especially for our higher, our high-impact classes. And as I said, the matrix changes were a lot of work between our two teams to make sure that, you know, we are providing those opportunities for all of our kids. So those are the major highlights for our programmatic changes.
All right, so it's kind of timely that we were able to talk about the instructional framework because now you, sorry, Andrew, now you have the foundation to be able to see what we're referring to here in a change in instructional mindset. So our professional development days are never enough, of course, but we also have the monthly PD and the teacher leader coaching that happens in classrooms. And that is really attributed with this framework to us being able to have teachers thinking, talking, and applying what they're learning. So what we just wanted to talk about really quickly is again, that clear, focused, and consistent K-twelve PD plan. So thinking about a professional development plan that in a district this large applies to everyone. The monthly professional development focus and both of those things. So the, on the right, you'll see some data. We started collecting this data in May of twenty twenty-three. We collect it every quarter, but we use the May to May as a comparison. We also allow this to be anonymous feedback, and we, we get a lot of feedback. We had, I think this was on average, like six hundred and fifty of our teachers responded, which is excellent for an anonymous survey. But we do that because we want them to be honest, and they are honest. We allow open feedback as well, but that's what drives what we're doing for our teachers around giving them the opportunities to be able to collaborate together, for us to be able to support them with that job-embedded instruction. And if you've ever Googled a meme on teacher professional development days, you'll see they're not usually, that people don't feel they're that purposeful. And that's our goal, is to change that. We want our teachers excited to come and learn together, whether it's in PD days or in monthly PD or even having Kim or Tiffany or any of our coaches come into the classrooms. That's really our focus right now. And if you look at the, the other two data points, in twenty twenty-three, we, we grew from twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-four in saying that they feel like the professional development offered this year changed what they did in their classroom, which was huge. We used to ask the question of, is it relevant to me? And that's one thing, but changing what you do in your classroom is another thing. So really thinking about, yeah, it applied to me, it was good to learn, but am I actually using it? And then the last piece of data was the professional development has impacted my students' growth in specific data content, knowledge, or skills, and that grew as well. Obviously, we want those numbers to be a hundred percent if at all possible, but we feel like just throughout the course of a year with what minor changes we've made, those instructional mindsets are changing and shifting, and we will continue to do that work with all of our teachers.
So as we move forward, here are a couple of areas that we believe will affect our data and report card in the future. Our building configuration, moving to K-five buildings under the master facilities plan in the future will help our individual building scores as no buildings currently get credit for the progress of students moving from second to third grade with our current configuration of K-two and three-six buildings. The fall reading diagnostic, we've had a few changes in the assessment over the years for this measure, and we believe we'll continue to see favorable data in this area as our assessment plan evens out over the next couple of years. We'll continue to see our gifted identification numbers even out from identification shifts from a few years ago. We're also continuing to explore, as Lauren was mentioning, an experiment with services in K-two, which will also help over, help that overall service percentage. The matrix changes that Andrew and Emily talked about, we shift our, we shifted our matrix for advanced classes in the junior high courses two years ago and then again last year. So this should help to ensure rigor for the students who are gifted or have scored previously high on a state assessment or are predicted to achieve well on a state assessment. Our ELA in math adoptions that are being implemented this year, we should hopefully start to see the effects of these research-based materials on the achievement of our students in the next couple of years. Teachers are completing the science of reading training from the state this year. So those principles apply consistency in our classroom, consistently in our classrooms, should have a positive impact on all of our students. And then lastly, well, when we continue to see that positive growth from our guaranteed and viable curriculum journey. So with this year being the first year of implementation with ELA in math, our focus is heavily on the viable part of that equation. So we're working through alignment, pacing, and instructional strategies this year to make sure our curriculum is viable and, and also making sure that guaranteed part is there, that everybody has a consistent piece with that. So with that, our conclusions, overall, we're very proud of our results, and we look forward to continuing to offer an aligned, rigorous instruction for all students. We definitely acknowledge that there could be an implementation gap in the future while teachers learn these new materials, their strategies and their pacing, but we're confident that our guaranteed and viable curriculum will continue to yield strong results for our students. Again, it takes time, effort, and dedication of the entire Lakota community to obtain the best results for our students. And this year's results continue to show that together we can. So with that, any questions?
Kelly, do you want to start this time?
Sure. A couple, just a couple, first of all, thank you. Thank you all. I, I know this was a heavy, heavy lift. We were not as smiling last year at this time, so.
That's why we're all here today.
Last year at this time was a little, little scary, but I applaud all, all of you and thank you, thank you all for your hard work. I, I know it's been a lot, so that said, I do have a couple of questions. One of the things about the early literacy where we know that we can, we can improve, you know, you mentioned that it will help us when we're K-five, but realistically, we're not K-five for probably.
A while.
A while. So do you have a, I mean, I know it's new and they just came out, so, but do you have more like a solid plan to try to? From my understanding too, isn't that third grade reading guarantee the bane of all of our existence? Is, it's hard because once they're off track, even when they come back on, it doesn't count as back on, correct?
That's correct, so, yeah, yeah, once they're on track, if they go back off track and then back on track.
Yeah, so I, I assume we're, we're going to, we have a plan for that. But yeah, I mean, I agree that it, it will be tremendous help when we're in the same building, but that's going to be a while down the road, so.
And I would say overall, the greatest improvement we saw, and we were so close to that four stars, and I think that would be phenomenal if we could hit that four-star level, was the improved, the off-track to on-track measure. We had so much growth in that area, and that's something that we can continue to, you know, put in for and, and hope that, hope for the best on that piece. But I think just focusing on that off-track to on, on-track like we have been will, will bring us to that four-star level as a district. Now, individual buildings, they all had increases in those ECS buildings, and that's phenomenal. I do think that's where you'll kind of see that there's only so much they can do with that at that level. But district-wide, we should be able to gain that fourth star.
What was that, one child? One child that brought us to seventy-eight percent? Heartbreaking. The other thing, some of the elementary schools, I know we all, they all did either maintain or improved. And I know all of our schools' demographics are different, but on some of the ones that are really shining stars, are we able to take things that they're doing well and put them into buildings who maybe need a little extra help?
Absolutely. I think one of the things with our data work that we do with our MTSS team is we dig deeply into the data of each building and the unique needs of each building to be able to help and coach and support. And we also talk a lot about allocation of resources in those buildings. And it doesn't look the same in every building because the needs aren't the same. So our staffing models, the support that we give on our level, and training and teacher, teacher training and things like that, we definitely look at the individualized needs of the buildings in addition to the whole district piece, so yes, absolutely.
And then with Central now being their own school, back when they were either an East student or a West student and they graduated, they graduated sometimes in the middle of the year. They just graduated when they finished their coursework. With them being their own school now, are they on a more traditional trajectory where they just graduate at the end of the year? Or do they still graduate when they have enough credits? And how does that affect?
The graduation.
Our graduation rate.
So yes, they graduate when they are. So yes, they graduate when they are full, you know, earned all the credits and able to graduate. So that's still the same, that they could graduate mid-year, anytime that they're ready. I believe, and Justin, you correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe it counts on the year, if they graduated in December, it would count on that following year's graduation rate as a, as a graduation. Is that correct?
Yeah, there's, there's a lot more digging. I actually had that very conversation with Eric Baumann, the principal over there, and some of the teachers we were meeting to.
Can you step up to the mic?
Yeah, that, we act, I was just having that same conversation with Eric Baumann, the principal at, at Central, as well as the counselor, we were, we were working on fall testing needs for, for that building. And they were asking, I said, you know, now that we are IRN, we see our, our rating on here, but it, it feels kind of like square peg in round hole, and I think that's exactly right. There, the way we go about, you know, reporting via EMIS to the state for these metrics and then the way they do things aren't necessarily a perfect match. And so honestly, that's a, that's a homework assignment there is to figure out, are there things that we can do just policy and procedure-wise that might be able to, to help them shine a little bit more? Because they are continuing to do some really great things. Those kids are graduating, they, they were, we, we want that to be able to show on the public-facing website too. And I said, yeah, I totally agree with you, Eric and, and team, so.
Right, because they really are doing good things for, for kids that, you know, have a drift, want a different alternative pathway.
Absolutely, and it's such a beautiful diversity of, of, of the, the student who's, you know, planning a professional soccer career to the, the kid who maybe just has some at-risk factors at home and everything in between, it's just a great alternate path for, for students.
Yeah. That's it, thank you guys again. Isaac?
Okay. Mine is to say thank you so much for this presentation. And I know that it took a lot of work, a lot of effort, a lot of collaboration, and it is intentional effort for us to get to where we are today. So I am so excited, I feel so, I don't know, excited, I don't know how to celebrate, but it's something we need to celebrate and we have to make a lot of noise about it. Because I know in the last few years, I, I felt so deflated, discouraged, but I didn't enjoy it. All I keep saying is, we need to keep pushing, we're going to get there. So I know this was an intentional effort. So thank you to all of you that made it possible for us to get to where we are. And I believe that we're going to keep going higher. Though I have a statement I'm going to read in for the record, but I just want to thank you guys. Thank you so much, appreciate you.
Again, thank you for, one, all the work that's been done, but then also coming in and helping us understand exactly what was done to a better degree. I have a lot of reactions and questions, so bear with me. Very proud of, of the achievement that everyone's done here, especially our students. A couple of comments, I, I know Ms. Webb, you know, we're focusing in on gifted, which, which is a passion area of mine. Doesn't need to necessarily be the whole board, but would love if you could share the plans that you guys are putting in place to continue progress on gifted. I know these are phenomenal results, actually, even though we're not getting the stars. So I, I, I don't, this is coming from a place of really great progress that's been done, but just really wanting to understand the plans that you're looking to put in place and how the board can support you more fully in the work that you're doing there. And I, and I really, I really want to call out, understanding what barriers are in place from an identification and a representation standpoint, especially in the K through 2 level. That just starts the whole cycle of, of everything, so the more we can do to help with that, please let us know. I think we, we'd love to try to help you, help support you in those efforts. Also, I would love for us to just take a moment and, and you guys are all professionals, you're very into this. We use, we use acronyms and technol, and technical terms. I love the support that you guys have put in place to support the individualized learning needs for the children. And so we talk about MTSS and learning interventions that are put in place. Could you share just an example of what do those learning interventions look like? Just examples of what those look like, just to help make it a little bit more concrete for people who aren't as familiar with this?
So one example would be, we have an intervention called Phonics First, which is an Orton-Gillingham-based intervention. And our data, we will look at the data, which is what we're in the process of doing right now, looking at our MAP and DIBLs results to see which students need more support in the area of phonics. And so yes, they're going to get that science of reading from the core with the teacher, especially with the new curriculum, but who needs more? And so it's that more piece that MTSS would help to kind of sift out.
Great, I appreciate that. And the other things I'll.
Doug, before you, why don't you give Ms. Webb an opportunity to answer your gifted question?
Oh, I didn't mean that today, I was going to give you time, but go ahead, if you got it, go. I didn't want to put people on the spot, except for that last one, I did put you on the spot.
I'll talk gifted as long as you want.
All right, let's go.
I will share with the additional GISs, the intentionality of being in the classrooms, especially as the curriculum adoptions are happening, trying to make sure that our students are accessing the rigor piece and being able to stretch. So our current GISs are in every plus class, so we have math plus and ELA plus at grades three through five. So they're in those classrooms at least one time per week. In most buildings, it's two. And then sixth grade, they're also supporting, but that looks a little different because of the advanced classes. So we're providing that Word Masters and Noetic Contest to get that level of rigor along with the curriculum that's already occurring. With that, we also have the groups that we pull out for our cognitively identified students that we know sometimes need something different than just curriculum, some critical thinking skills, sometimes some executive functioning supports. That happens two times per week for grades three through five. And then with the sixth grade, as we can, again, with those advanced classes, it's hard for them to miss any content. So finding the, the time within the day to get that, what they need. And then because we have the additional GISs, we are also working at our K-2. As you stated, Mr. Horton, the K-2 grade band is definitely where our opportunities lie. The state also emphasizes that grade band more than any other. So with that identification and service, we actually get double the points at the K-2 grade band than we do at any of the others. And so we have always identified cognitive abilities, reading, and math at K-2, but we haven't provided service, and so we're missing that opportunity. So this year, as we identify those students, we will provide gifted service to them through their classroom teacher, but also through the support of the GIS. Like I shared, I know the testing practices that we have in place may not always have our kids show up at their best abilities because they haven't had access before. So key part of trying to help our underrepresented groups is to have access to some of that critical thinking, the puzzles that we did, those of you who've done Qubits before, we did some of that with our kiddos because of the manipulation and spatial reasoning that goes into it. So those are the small parts that are in place right now. And then we also looked at our gifted data of what are our gifted students achieving? Those students who are limited basic proficient, how can we support them better? Because clearly there's a disconnect. And so our GISs have those students and are having those conversations in the planning processes with the teachers and also in the relationships with the individual students on how can we support you better? And have you show up on those tests at the ability level that you really are.
Thank you. Also, a lot of this, I, I think, isn't just this past year. It's built on things that you guys thought out that I know you guys have been working on for years. And so the focus in on having more support through NEXUS, for example, the, the increase in advanced classes, this is work that's been ongoing, so it's great to see it pay off. And, and I appreciate the fact that you guys are doing that, not just to look at where we are on the scorecard, but also to allow our, our highest, highest performing kids to actually achieve what they need to, but then also get the individualized support. So really, really good. And one of the things that I think also reassures me is when I talk, you know, anecdotally with parents and friends and families and so that, a lot of this addresses some of the frustrations that we've had over the years as far as like the scope and sequence and making sure that, hey, my advanced kid isn't learning the same standard for four years in a row until he gets to a certain level. So it's great to see that work addressing some of the friction points that, you know, parents and families have felt, and it's, it's showing up in the report card. So really appreciate all the work from everybody.
I also want to echo, congratulations. Your leadership has really carried through and trickled down into our classrooms. I especially want to say congratulations to our teachers who have put in more hours than any of us could ever imagine to make these things come to life and to attend the professional development and figure out how it translates into their classroom and figure out how to, how that translates into their data and looking at individual student data and making sure that they're growing. Honestly, those are the people that have put in the time and the effort and I just want to make sure that we recognize them for this, these tremendous scores. And congratulations to all of you on leading it. I know I started with that, but those things can't happen without good leaders, so congratulations. I do have a few questions. One of them is kind of two-part. As we know, as we start, as our scores start to increase, it becomes harder and harder to meet those measures because we're basically closing down the groups of students that we need to succeed in order to make those percentages rise. And so my question is, do we have a district action plan in place that has specifically looked at student percentages and where we need to be and set some really specific goals that when testing happens, we can go back and say, okay, we've made progress with X amount of students towards that goal?
That's a great question. We do have, in terms of those OST action plans in place, those are look, more looking at like an individual student level or a teacher level of data. And individual buildings look at their data, but as far as like setting an actual goal, we haven't put a plan in place that would have a building or a district level goal that we're trying to hit that measure, but that's a great suggestion, we could look into doing that.
And I would say from, from my role, we will be doing that. You know, once we get through strategic planning as well, making sure that we set a district measure, a metric that we are holding ourselves accountable for with very specific action steps. And then really that trickles down to the building level, right? So if you have a performance index level as a district, you know that some schools are closer to that or some schools are farther from that, just that goal, but then making sure that there's still attainable measures that each school can reach as well as the district.
It'd be really great to have some updates over the course of the year on how we're doing towards those goals. This is a great presentation, but it happens once a year, so it'd be really great to see that progress towards it. And then the second part of this question goes along with what you were saying is, can you talk a little bit about how the building action plan and the data action plan come together to become maybe one plan or are they two separate plans or how do those go together?
So the OST action plans are more having the teachers dig into their individual data. We prepare, our MTSS team prepares some data for them that they can dig into and start to make some instructional decisions in their classrooms. And then on the building level, we have prepared data that kind of breaks down all of the different components and all of the new data points and compares and looks for trends and all those things to be able to give principals decision-making power. So we kind of curate that data to a point where they are ready to look at it and make a decision. Those do kind of come together because individual teachers are working in general areas of trend towards the whole building. So we do ask, when we, our teachers do their OTES, PGP meetings, usually we have our district-level building action plans template and then the buildings have their individual plans that they're working on and then the teachers have aligned goals within that. So I think that data work does come together, even though everybody kind of has their particular branch. And, and we work to kind of have that teacher data and student level data in, influx into the building data, which, you know, affects the district data. I don't know if anybody else has a piece to add to that?
Actually, Justin might be able to speak a little bit better about it, but we actually have our teams meet with the principals and the teachers. The principals are part of these conversations. We have, they call them touchpoints and they, every couple of weeks, they have touchpoints with the building principals. They share the data as it goes along. And then also they are previewing what work is happening with the teacher teams. And so they plan that with the principals. And Justin's been in those meetings, so he might be able to.
Yeah, I, I can speak to that. The way our, our model's worked, I, myself and, you know, so I, I primarily work in the, in the secondary field, for those who don't know me, I, I directly support West and its feeders, so Ridge and Plains and West Freshman and West High. And then the other Justin of the famed Justins is the east-side version thereof. And, but we, we really tackle, you know, kind of making those connections that Lori and Dina were talking about. I started my morning today with Ridge, met with, with, with Stacy Cahill, the principal, and Jen Newbart, the, the teacher leader, and myself and Mark Byrd from the MTSS team. And we both circle back on what are your building action plan goals and how are your teachers doing? They have, you know, every teacher has a custom, we call them the bell-by-bell sheet, where they have every single student in every one of their bells, as well as how they did previous years, how they've done on their readiness practice assessments. They'll have their projections for their achievement for the upcoming year. So we, we inevitably have those conversations about, okay, you've got a next, your next BLT meeting is coming up. Here's what we talked about in DLT on the district level. How can we now connect that when you're meeting with your teachers in BLT and how you're having those, those department meetings? So I, I think that such points become a real valuable, it's, it's a real thought partner opportunity for district staff as well as building staff to come together and, and plan together around those goals.
I should have mentioned our district leadership team when he refers to DLT, BLT, TBTs. Those are district leadership team, building leadership team, and then teacher-based teams. We worked to kind of revamp our DLT model this year. One thing we found that was kind of lacking last year in our DLT model was just having all the right people at the table to be really actionable at the BLT level. So we are kind of reformatting that in that we're looking at district on a, data on a district level and then kind of modeling the practice and process that we want our BLTs to engage in at the building level. So we shared with them all the data possibilities and all the examples we have in the district. And then they're going to go back to their building and do that same practice. And then we are also using our teacher leaders to kind of build up that teacher-based practice. And they'll be modeling some of those data conversations for our teachers and individual groups coming up. And then we hope that information feeds right back up. The teacher-based teams are sharing with their building-based team and then they're sharing with the district-level team and we're kind of looking at those needs and trends in those areas.
I only have two more questions and I promised they're fast. One's kind of more of a thought than really a question, but maybe a little bit of a question is, it's really evident that when you set specific goals and set your mind on a specific portion of the report card, you can make huge progress and that is evident in the progress category. I can only assume that you're going to shift focus and focus on the achievement category a little bit more, which is the least green of everything on, on the screen, but we know that progress then equals achievement. And I would assume that the, a building action plan and a district action plan with really specific achievable percentages will help move towards that achievement piece. And looking over this information over the weekend and today, my question was going to be how, but I think that was answered by the instructional framework presentation, so I'm glad those two things went together. And my last question is, and this is, this is a trend thing, it's been this way for years. I'm really concerned about our special ed population. We talk a lot about our gifted population and that's because it is a specific component of its own on the report card. But our special ed population did, did not meet in either category, ELA or math. It's the only one of all of them that did not. And so I don't know if, if the right person is up there to answer this question or if that's something that we dig into further, but I would love to know, what are we doing to work towards meeting those requirements in those two areas? And how is, how can we as a board support? Is it, is it framework-wise, is it buildings, is it staffing? What is it that we can do to help support that?
And to speak to that, you know, doing listening and learning sessions, there, we're about halfway through those and there are certainly some themes that rise to the top. And I would think, or I think it's fair to say that special education is one of those things. So teasing through that currently, again, at the halfway mark and continuing to add on that as we go through the fall, there are some things, I think there are some deliberate things that we can do and some action plans we can take around that, not only around staffing, but around data marks, particularly maybe around some behaviors and some additional support and things in that nature. So I think it's a very layered approach, all of which can impact instruction and the day-to-day happening in the classroom. So working with our people services director, working with our special education team and really taking that feedback, which is very specific actually, from our staff and from our parent groups, and really making some actionable plans from that, I think will be our important next step.
Just to add to that a little bit, just so you know, that with the MTSS process, we do include all students. So when we are looking at these data points, we don't just say, well, this student has an IEP, so we're not going to look at this. They are included in all of our conversations. And then the information is also shared with the special education team.
And I would just like to add, as someone who used to work on the special education side of town, when you create specially-designed instruction on IEPs, you're, you're responding to what's in tier one. You're responding to what is or isn't happening in the classroom or what is or isn't meeting the needs of the students. So I do feel from a curriculum. So I do feel from a curriculum and instruction side of things, that that guaranteed and viable curriculum will affect our students with special needs just as much as anyone else. Because provide, and, and one of the things we focused on is including our intervention specialists and all the professional development around these new materials and all of the instructional strategies, so that we're all speaking the same language, so that when special education does have to address a need, it's pretty clear what the base-level instruction that that student is getting in tier one. I do think that will make some additional gains in that area, area also.
Again, a lot, some of my questions I've been able to check off. But, and I know you mentioned a little bit about this in Gifted, that only six school districts in the state got the five points for Identification and Service. But I know that's an area that we've made a lot of investment in professional development and making sure that our teachers were certified. I mean, do you think that will help in getting, I mean, because we were, that was one where we were at 42 versus 80. It's not like we were on the, we had some that were half a point, like it, pretty large gap.
So I'll speak candidly. Our operating standards for Gifted have expired. The state, it's now sitting there. There's a couple of key things that impact specifically that Identification and Service indicator. And Creative Thinking Service is one of them. We've identified kids in creative thinking, then it is, was supposed to stop and not impact the report card. But now it's still on because we're still waiting on the state to approve what operating standards we have. So I think that we will, I think it will take at least another year for some of those things that should be falling off this year and not counting against us. I think it'll take us a little bit of time. It does improve, but it's really difficult because a lot of our opportunities at K-2 we're addressing. But at 912, that is where our significant amount of gifted students aren't taking higher-level classes in their areas of gifted identification. So one of the reasons why we worked really hard on the sixth-grade matrix is we, we recognized that some of our gifted students weren't even making it through the original matrix that we had. And so it's been multiple iterations of that sixth-grade matrix to try to make sure that our students who should be in those advanced classes are recommended to take those. So again, that's one that takes a little bit of time to have that impact. But I do foresee it improving. The ID and service, if you look at the three-six is beautiful. Because we are serving almost every identified student that is in math and ELA, where we didn't use, we only had math before, so.
So beyond that sixth-grade matrix, are you also going to the classroom teacher level to avoid discouragement down the road of taking some of those higher-level classes that has been known to occasionally happen?
I, I know that my colleagues will also weigh in on this. But very intentional meetings when students drop down out of a course has occurred. And at higher rates at one school than another, and we can see that show up. And how many students are using those AP seats versus how many signed up originally? And that's a lot of work that Andrew and Justin, Justin could speak even more eloquently about. But it's been really intentional about making sure that the teachers recognize that these students are capable and we should try to keep them in these higher-level courses to meet their needs. And then also, that alignment of our 712-two gifted support advisors do intentionally run report card information and then intervene with any students who aren't necessarily making the grades that they should, which is another reason why students drop down. And so they do that weekly now, that we have one on each side of the district. So they spend their time on typically Fridays, running reports and then literally going to classrooms and pulling kiddos out and having those conversations and trying to help. And we have peer tutoring set up at every 912 building. So that even if the gifted support person isn't there, we do have a student who is highly recommended in that key area, like ma, a specific math class, that students can go to during their nexus bell and get help. So, small improvements, I think it'll take some time. I know they could speak better to exactly what the process looks like for dropping down. But it's been much more intentional over the last two years.
Okay.
I would say that there is a lot of culture work around that. And what I mean by that, former AP teacher and honors English 10 teacher, is you want to create a culture of learning, not a culture of grades. And in nine through 12 particularly, and I think since the implementation of CCP, College Credit Plus, that has even changed that dynamic to more of a seven through 12, that you want kids to experience a stretch. That does not always translate to an A or even a B. And so making sure that we have a culture, not only within our school district, but for families and students to understand that the grade is not the be-all and-all, but rather the experience is some culture work that takes time. And also some really deliberate intentional conversations. Because there's a book called Excellent Sheep. It's written by a Yale professor. And he talks about that particularly at the seventh and tw, seven through 12 grade experience, children have become resume builders. They have become grade-point-average scourers and, and seekers. And so that really competes with a culture of learning. And so really trying to calibrate that, not only with our teachers, right? Who sometimes get the parent complaint first or get the parent pushback. I'm really understanding how to make that and communicate that across the community will really help change that culture and make sure that kids, even when the grade is not there, they stay there for the experience of learning.
And just pigging back on that, absolutely. We'll have a roadshow that will be kicking up here pretty soon, where we're going to come out to junior highs, as well as the high schools, about a parent night around CCP and AP. And here's why you want to take these. And we, we try to think of what are your college and career goals? And, and really start to match those, match the learning behind those, those different, you know, course pathways. So we're doing a lot more with that around the pathways, being intentional about what you choose. We've had a lot of great conversations with our coun, guidance counselors at the high schools about, yeah, let's, let's help support our kids in those first few weeks so that they don't just want to bail out as soon as the first big paper is assigned. No, stick with it because we know that you have the capability. And then one last thing I'll say is, I, I think our adoption of School Links is a program to really help kids course-register every year at the high school level, has been very impactful. We've only had year one of it. But it really is a more transparent process. It has the kids more, more in charge of their own course selection than ever before. And what we really saw as we walked the halls last year is teachers, you know, the, the AP teacher for AP Lit having conversations with kids, you really should sign up for my class next year in AP Lit because of this, this, and this. And really seeing almost like a positive competitive spirit about, you really want to be a part of these programs. So just really empowering our kids, I think, to make those, want to make those right choices.
Great. Yeah. College Credit Plus, we talked about that, that we've been intentional increasing the number of offerings. And I think that we've spoken about that our AP participation rate is still fairly high. So with that career readiness factor, are we continuing to see improvement? And do we anticipate further improvement based on those two metrics or those two opportunities?
Yeah, so we've seen in the past couple of years about a 25% increase in students taking AP courses, while seeing a 6X increase in CCP. Typically, in school districts that increase AP or have high AP numbers, they have low CCP numbers. And then when they increase CCP, they tend to decrease the AP numbers. But we're able to increase both. I think it's important to kind of recognize like the strategic work that you've seen in the program of study presentations, but also the teamwork that we, we've had with the MTSS team. Because a lot of that work came in this concept of, we had students who were showing they had the capabilities to be in advanced coursework, but were not. And so working with the MTSS team to, I, look at the data, identify the students, and then going all the way down sometimes to the counselors and saying, here are the students, and having them actually go talk to students, or go talk to families and say, you have what it takes to be in these courses. Let's get you in these courses. Because the reality is, when you're in high school and you've never taken an advanced course, a lot of people just don't randomly sign up for an advanced course because they have not built that confidence or had that experience. So it's been a, a team effort and a lot of strategy behind that. So with that being said, when it comes to the CCWM, the College Career Military Readiness Indicator, a couple of the areas that's, that, which you get it is the AP participation and also through CCP. In order to hit the CCP numbers, you have to have 12 credits, 12 college credits. So that's typically, you know, four courses. And so by putting in, now we have 17 in-house CCP courses. What we had before is we had a lot of students who would get three credits or six credits, which is great that they're getting those college credits, but it's not getting us to the indicator. So what we can expect to see is that we have a 20% increase in our CCWM number. And that's without even the years that it's, it's going to take for those kids to earn up to 12. So we fully expect that over the, I would say, the course of the next three years of that number, I would expect that number to be getting closer to 80% as opposed to the current 60% that it is now.
And then also, I know another piece of that is the whole credentialing, that kids can get credentials. I know Butler Tech is focused in on that a lot. And then honors diplomas. And it seems like honors diploma is something that we've not, my impression, is that's not something that's been a focus. Am I off on that? Is that, are those both things we're working on as well?
Yeah, I wouldn't say it's not necessarily a focus. They did just change the, the rules for honors diploma and the different things that you can take to get it. What I do think that we are doing is the changes we made in the, the program of study and the offerings we're providing kids, we're actually providing more opportunities for kids to be able to get them. So I think your suggestion is, is one that we'll take a look at, is how do we be more strategic and, and, you know, marketing that to students? But I think, I feel way more confident in saying that we have the opportunities for students to be able to earn that than we had, let's say, three years ago.
Okay. Yeah, it's just making them understand there's value in it, I think. Because I guess is more what I'm focused, you know, I'm not sure that they get it, and maybe there isn't a value to them. I'm not sure.
We were talking as a team the other day, you know, there are certainly the honors components requirements, but then there's also your regular graduation requirements. And you have to make sure that those aren't so far and wide, the discrepancy between those, that you make it a very possible, doable thing within your own regular graduation requirements to reach that honors diploma quite easily. So we've started to just have some internal conversations about making sure our just, you know, normal graduation requirements are more in line with what they need to be as far as rigor and college readiness, or workforce readiness.
And then just lastly, I, as we look at our report card relative to the others, I think it would be interesting, I know Adam pulled up for me because I had this question beforehand, that when we look at our spending per student relative to our peers, and he just did it, versus the state average, and we're spending about $1,500 less per student. So when you look at these results, also within the context of the value for our community, I think that that's also a nice thing to see when we can, when we're, we're lining up nicely.
And we'll pull that data like a compare, across our comparatives. And I'll send that to you in my weekly update, just so you can see how we do with financial expenditures across those districts.
All right. Any other things you'd like to wrap up, or any other thoughts, Adam, or?
No, I just appreciate everybody's time coming in and the results we had. We've spent a lot of time and a lot of investment to get to this point, so congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That was all great data. We really appreciate the, the thoroughness of that presentation and all the work that went on behind the, to get to this presentation and all those great results. So with that, I had, do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Adam, please call the roll.
Ms. Casper?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. De?
Yes.
Ms. French?
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
We have superintendent's recommendations, approval of personnel, the Maple Knoll Radio Agreement, the agreement with OSBA to perform a transportation audit, as well as a performance routing study, to approve field trips, to approve an MOU that was omitted when our previous MOUs were approved, and approved donations. Are there any that anyone would like separated out? We can ask, I, just if, are you okay with them all being together?
Yes.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve A through G?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion?
There you go.
Yes, okay. That's for the interest of those that might not understand what this is. What is Maple Knoll Radio Agreement?
So I'll go through a couple of things on this section of the agenda. One is the Maple Knoll Radio Agreement. This is for our use of our radio waves. Actually, if I think back all the way to my time at Lakota High School, we used to have a radio class that used radio waves. Kids talked on the radio. We had our own radio station, right? It was, I think it's WMKU. Basically, Maple Knoll is using those radio waves that were already existing under the name of Lakota local schools. And we have an agreement for them to be able to use that. It's a longstanding agreement. What we are doing is we're just extending that agreement for another three years. And so basically, they use those waves that were already in existence under the school district. And we have a partnership in that. So that's just a month, it's basically a three-year extension. As far as the Transportation Operations Review and the Transportation Consulting Route, as we have talked about, we've had multiple conversations about Peterman and our partnership and just busing and transportation, and making sure that it is the best plan for our families and our community, and it meets the needs. And so with that contract expiring with Peterman in 2026, we do want to be proactive. And so we want to make sure that we go through our RFP process and get requests for proposals to make sure that it's still very competitive. We're still getting what we want from that partnership and that it's working smoothly. But in addition to that, this is almost like an audit of our transportation. Is it running smoothly, right? And there's two halves of that. There's the transportation operations, just how the transportation is operating. But then there's the routing piece, which I know we've also had a lot of conversation of. So that first piece, the to, the total cost of that is about $8,000, as you would see in those agreements. But it will be offset, that money would be offset by our in lieu of transportation and eligibility money that we receive. So it's not a additional purchase. It's an offset. So that would just really be another layer of data that we can use from a very objective third party to make sure that we continue to look at our transportation operations as best we can to make more informed decisions for the future. Even though it's not till 2026, we just want to be proactive. Memorandum of Understanding, as Ms. Schaefer said, that was accidentally left off on the last MOUs that you agreed, or that you approved last meeting. It's just a rollover of the language that was in the existing contract. It was accidentally just left off in the list. If you remember, there were several. And then there is a field trip approval there. One of our cybersecurity students is receiving an award, and that is in Texas. And you might wonder why there are two adults attending that, but that is because of just safety. You never want an adult and a student attending a field trip alone. So that is why two adults are attending that trip as well.
Any further questions or discussion?
Just a, just a comment. Love that Maple Knoll has, has helped us out with us in maintaining the frequencies, which I would never want to let go of, and I don't want to, you know, try to walk away from the agreement that we have with them. But given the proliferation of the student broadcasting clubs at East and West, it would be great to just start discussions now about are there ways that we could potentially be leveraging it for the district again that would still work with how Maple Knoll's using it? It's just that, that capability has grown so much in the past three years. It's, it's phenomenal. And I could use some more like local sports radio. And then I just have a comment too. I really appreciate this approach to getting data on our transportation. And we, we saw how beneficial it was to have data addressing the routing issue earlier in the year. So I think this is just going to equip us to be, to be in a much better place, given addressing transportation, not only as part of this, but as where we, where we're going with our master facilities plan.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. Adam, please call the roll.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Ms. French?
Yes.
Mr. De?
Yes.
Ms. Casper?
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
All right, we'll do closing comments.
Forget my name. We'll start with you.
I feel like I said a lot of my closing comments when I was referencing the report card information. So again, congratulations. And I'm looking forward to closing out the first quarter. I can't believe it's that time already, but I'm looking forward to that. So, thank you for all the great presentations today.
I just want to also thank everyone who presented tonight, especially because it wasn't just a presentation. It felt like an honest discussion around actually how you thought and approached everything that you guys have been working on. So I really appreciate that ability to help inform us as a board on how we can better support you. I also appreciate just the, the ways that you guys detailed MTSS and the systems in place and how that is designed to help support student achievement in subject areas and drive the type of intervention that's needed to help students succeed on both progress and achievement. It does throw out my Halloween costume because MTSS is not the scary thing anymore. So I'm going to have to try to figure out something else on that.
Think of something else.
And that's all I'm going to say.
Yeah. All right. I, I believe that, like I said before, it was intentional for us to get to where we are. And I could see from your presentations that you, we have talents and we have people that, that can take us to the next level. But for you to do that, you know you have to have good leadership. So I believe that for you to get where, where you, to, for you to get to where we are today, because you brought so much information today, that, that it was a lot of work that was done. I believe that leadership played a good role in that. For that, I want to give a shout-out to Dr. Lolly. When Dr. Lolly accepted the position of interim superintendent at Lakota Schools, our school was in a, in a state of academic and public tragedy. Much like hos, a hospital emergency room, Dr. Lolly accepted the challenges presented and immediately started to diagnose and diagnose the problems. and immediately started to diagnose, diagnose the problems and establish a process, allocate the resources necessary to bring our schools into alignment with state standards and community expectations. And I know the board was in alignment with her. We gave her the freedom to run the district the way she felt like. This started at the central office, the school board, the school board, and touch every building principal and their staff from top to bottom. Her stated goal was to increase our state rating from three point five to four point oh. I remember when she said that, even personally to me when I was talking to her, when she came on, and I asked her what was, what was her plan and what is her goal? And she stated to me that my goal is at least from three point five to two point four, which will, rating under, which led to better growth once fully implemented. We now know that our state rating achieved a four point five rating under her leadership. And we will be forever grateful to her for this achievement. In one of the conferences, I understand, one of the things that picked up there is we need to celebrate our leadership. We need to celebrate our superintendents, our treasurers, our teachers, and everybody when they have done a great job. And I believe it is a good thing to celebrate the teachers, parents, the students, and also to recognize leadership. And I'm also excited that we have another superintendent that is ready. Dr. Wiley is ready. The last time we had our meeting, she came with colors all over her hair, all over her body in that meeting, and I knew she's ready to move the district the way we want her, the district to go. So I want to first of all congratulate all of you and to thank you all for your efforts and where we are. And I'm happy to hear that there's action plan for continuity, and that's what I will be looking forward to. Thank you so much.
Kelly?
Sorry, I lost track of what I was going to say. Again, a big thank you. The one thing I do want to say that I heard from the presentation that really made me happy besides the four and a half stars was that, I think Lori said it, that you are not going to rest on the laurels of the four and a half stars. We know we can improve. We know we have work to do, that we can even be better. So I was, I really was glad to hear that, so thank you for that. I do believe it was a district-wide team effort to get to where we are, from the kindergarten student to the 12th grade teacher. I think it was a, I think we all, all hands on deck last year, so I appreciate that. I can't believe we're wrapping up first quarter. Sports are coming to an end. Fall sports are coming to an end and going strong. We went to a jazz band concert last week, so things are starting to ramp up for the end of the quarter, and I'm just excited for a second quarter to see where we go. So thank you to everyone.
Mr. Zeke?
Again, shout out to the curriculum department, all the staff, the performance. That's, I don't think anybody thought that that kind of movement could happen in one year, so huge shout out to that. Also, I want to give a shout out to the treasurer's office staff for picking up all the slack while I went down sick. Been out for a little longer than I thought I would, but shout out to them for getting everything done and keeping the train on track, so that's all I have.
To Isaac's point and to all of your points, really, there was a lot of great work done last year. Lot of great work. And to continue that momentum, because together we can. You know, I was blessed with a great team in lots of fronts. And so I think we will continue to partner and make sure we have very actionable, smart, goal-oriented plans that we can reach, because I truly believe that this district is destined for great things, and we will do that together.
And I completely concur. I think I'm very grateful for all the work that was done, not just last year, but over the years. And none of us felt like last year's report card reflected what was happening. And so it's nice to have that public face to be able to see that again reflected in our report card. And beyond the report card, all the great innovative programs that we have that are what cause people to move here, the report card is a baseline, but then it's all the opportunities beyond that that really make Lakota what it is. So we're thankful for that. Again, reiterating, the Reach Out Lakota Food Drive ends October 11th. Please get your items in. Volley for the Cure was at East and West this last two weeks. Thank you for partnering and supporting our community and supporting cancer, getting rid of cancer. Not cancer. So we also had the jazz band, as Kelly mentioned. Our bands are in, getting in busy competition season. We have choir concerts this week, GMCs, and then the report cards, so it's a busy time. And for me personally, I just want to say happy 18th birthday to my son. I seem to be on a streak where my family's birthdays have all been on board meetings this year. And he's turning 18 tonight, so I'm very excited for what the future holds for him as he finishes up his senior year, so. With that, we're going to move into executive session. We do not anticipate any action after that. But if I could have a motion to enter into executive session to consider the appointment, employment dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, or compensation of a public employee or official per Ohio Revised Code 121.22, or to consider the investigation of charges or complaints against a public employee, also 121.22, three, to review matters required to be kept confidential by federal or state laws and or regulations, 121.22G5, and then four, to review details relative to the security arrangements and emergency response protocols because disclosure of the matters discussed could reasonably be expected to jeopardize the security of the Board of Education, per Ohio Revised Code 121G6. Do I have a motion? So moved. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Ms. French?
Yes.
Mr. D?
Yes.
Ms. Casper?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
Okay. Isaac was like, why? Didn't know why I was waiting to start the pledge. I was waiting for it as Stan just walked out the door.
Peace out.
We're like, we gotta go back in here.
I was waiting for Kelly to stand up. Yeah. I'm sorry.
So to say. We're live. We're live.
I sleep at nine.
Okay, I know. Isaac was like, why? Didn't know why I was waiting to start the pledge. I was waiting for it as Stan just walked out the door.
Peace out.
We're like, we gotta go back in here.
I was waiting for Kelly to stand up. Yeah. I'm sorry.
So to say. We're live. We're live.
Okay. Pull us out of executive session. Do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing done. Adam, please call the roll.
Ms. Casper.
Yes.
Mr. D.
Yes.
Ms. French.
Yes.
Mr. Horton.
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer.
Yes.